Now, before I like to call the Adams County Superintendent to order. Uh, Mr. Bradford, would you give us an opportunity?
Let us bow his, oh gracious and wise father, we thank you this morning of God for allowing us to see another day. And father, we just can't forgive your name, our own praise and glory. And father, we ask oh God that you touch our hearts and touch our minds, oh God. Father, look over our elected officials, oh God, father, let them make perfect decisions, oh God. Father, we just ask oh God to continue, keep them closer together, oh God. And father, we know that one can't fall far from the other. And father, we just asking for peace, oh God, we just asking for safety, oh God. Father, we pray for our law enforcement, our first responders, father, continue to keep them safe. We pray for our schools and our teachers, our lawyers, our doctors. And father, we just pray for peace right now throughout this country, community, this state, and this world, oh God. And father, we just pray right now, oh God, for our finances, oh God. Father, we know that you're gonna make a way, oh God. And father, we just ask that you open doors that have never been opened, oh God, as we go through this fiscal year, oh God. Father, bless everyone that are preparing the budgets, that's looking over the budgets, oh God. And father, we just ask, oh God, that, let your people understand, oh God, that if whatever your will is, that's your will and your way. And father, we just ask all these in your precious son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of House, supervisor right here, supervisor Hutchins.
Yes.
Supervisor Billups present. Supervisor Wilsons present. Deputy Attorney Dean.
Present.
Chance of Kurt, uh, Randy Lewis.
Present.
Attorney Lieutenant Scott Slower present. And I am present. Now, I need a motion for the approval of the documents. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins.
Second.
And properly seconded by Supervisor Wilsons. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "a". If there be any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous. All right, I need, uh, county business. Any county business? Any city government business? Defense.
Um, um, uh, President, only business I have, uh, have you touched bases with anybody on this?
What's that now?
Have you touched bases with anybody that can tell you something about Martin John Wilson?
Uh, yes, the President and I adopted, she actually talked to Gaines and Brian, and then I talked with both the principal and the, and the vendor. I talked to, no, I guess the manager. I talked with the, uh, principal after the manager, because I wouldn't like him with saying so. Uh, he said, circle back over with them.
All right.
President, what about if y'all set up a meeting with E nine, E nine one one?
You want me to set up a meeting with nine one one? With the city?
With the city.
Are there being more city business?
I request one, and so far we've been unsuccessful, because we haven't won, hadn't, hadn't wanted to have a meeting about that.
Now, have they been paying us?
They pay us two hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, but there's a shortfall of equalizing expenses with not, you know, of what we budgeted for, what we budgeted for, we received. But when you're splitting these expenses in half, we're not getting the full amount.
Right. That's right. Could he sit up here, he's gonna have a lot of questions to ask you. Oh, he didn't want to sit up there.
I tried to hide.
You too big to hide.
Not too big to hide.
Too important not to.
All right, you know. Business is not, any more city business, we're gonna send it to departmental reports. Everybody have to be there.
Don't be there.
Good morning, board. N X L for Adams County, E nine one one. For the calls for office the first up to now, Adams County S O had four fifty-one, Nat's PD at seven thirty-nine, and Nat's Friday Department had twenty-five. Also, I got a request for a rehire on a Sarah Davis.
I do have it, um, a rehire, Sarah Davis, telecommunication officer. I do have a paperwork signed, twelve sixty, um, can I get them over? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by Supervisor, uh, Gray. There be any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "a". Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous.
I have some paperwork to change for, uh, Martin Swaden to attack officer.
To attack officer?
Yes.
Pay will go to fourteen sixty. I do have the paperwork, it hasn't been signed, can I get them over?
What else do you, uh?
It's a shift captain slash tax officer.
Is this in the budget, or raises in the budget?
Yeah, he just replaced somebody that was a tax officer.
He replaces someone that was a tax officer, okay.
It's been properly moved by.
Second.
Uh, Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Any discussion?
That's the president, so this individual, student that's replacing somebody, the person that he replaced making the same thing?
Yeah, they replaced.
Yeah, he replaced, all right. Any more discussion, more clarification, all in favor vote by using the sign of "a". Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous.
You got two shift slash tax. Correct?
Yeah, I got two tax.
Two shift supervisors slash tax officer.
Yes, yes.
So they're still, that's not changed, right?
No, they said that.
All right.
Any more questions?
Any question for, uh, this hand there? Let me know, of course, and thank you, Mr. Fairs, for the job that you do for the county. All right, next departmental report, don't be shy.
Good morning, my name is Denise Price, and I'm the purchase clerk for Adams County. Um, I would like to spread the permit card and travel card across the Minnesota pool for July.
You ready to request? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Proper seconded by Supervisor Gray. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "a". Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous.
That's all I have today, anyone have any questions?
Anybody have any questions, though?
Thank you.
First of all, all right, thank you. Departmental report next.
Good morning, Mary K. Doherty, Adams County Court. Uh, this morning, I have the paperwork that needs to be signed for our, um, award that we received. We, last time I was here, I had y'all sign to apply for it, we applied for a hundred and four, we were actually awarded seventy thousand. I am here with all the paperwork that needs to be signed, but I need a, a new fund number issued to this.
What's the name of current?
It's a D P S P JAG, federal, it's a federal fund, it's generally one twenty-four, right now it's currently one twenty-four. There is, uh, there's some funds left in there that, um, with your permission, they are allowing me to apply to keep those funds, to continue to expend them, eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. But I'll have to keep that under Fund One Twenty Four and issue a new fund for the new award.
They need two motions, you need a motion to allow you to apply for them to keep the, uh, you to keep the eighteen thousand, then you need a motion to allow me to sign the paperwork.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, well, let's do the first one. Uh, I need a motion to allow her to apply to be able to keep the eighteen thousand dollars. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "a". Any opposed, may they have the same right. All right, now I need a motion to be able to sign the grant paperwork for seventy thousand, um, dollars that was applied for, for one of four, but was awarded seventy thousand. Can I get a motion? Got it. So, well.
My motion is to apply for the seventy thousand dollars grant.
No, no, she already, she, no, we, we received a grant. She, they applied for a hundred and forty thousand, they only received seventy thousand of, of the money.
For you to sign the.
I didn't sign the paperwork, but I also need to amend that motion, I need to make that motion, applying for, to a new fund, allow them, the chance for clerk to make, create a new fund to receive the grant.
Still move?
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, I guess second. Been properly seconded by Supervisor Wilsons. Will there be any discussion?
I, I, I got, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Since the last grant was one twenty-four?
No, one o, no, they applied for one o four.
So what was the last grant?
The one we're currently in?
Right.
Was seventy thousand one dollars is what we ended up with, what they actually awarded us. And I've seen left from that, that I'm trying, that I've just asked for the motion to, to keep that money expended out.
So you gonna get the same amount you got last time?
Yeah, this is, they gave us seventy thousand.
All right, any more discussion?
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Is it a reimbursable grant?
Yes, it is.
Now, where y'all getting the money to fund the expenses on the front end?
The county pays for it in the front end, and then we spend it, we send in the copies of the checks and the disbursement ledgers, and they reimburse us.
That's, that's the question I was asking.
Okay.
I asked y'all a question earlier, are y'all, are you asking the county to put money into this fund so they can fund, because there's no money in the fund. If we set up a fund, it would make the expenses undergo an red, right?
Until they reimburse us.
So that's, that's the way, I'm new at this, as far as that aspect, how y'all do it? Because my question that I'd asked Mr. Slower was, how can you, I'm, what I'm getting is, how can you have eighteen thousand dollars left in a fund? That was a, that one was a reimbursable grant, where did the eighteen come from?
She's saying this was left.
It's still left for the seventy thousand dollars awarded, that has not been expended yet.
There's twenty-eight thousand.
We expend it, then get reimbursed.
There's twenty-eight thousand cash balances, there's eighteen more that she can spend and get reimbursed.
Where did that twenty-eight come from, if it's a reimbursable grant?
Probably, did the county, did the, did the county put money in there to cover the expenses to start with, so with that eighteen, is that twenty-eight we can take back out? It's like, I was. That's reimbursed money, we can go and research it.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna do that, but that, you understand what I'm asking? Y'all, y'all.
We agree to spend the money, and then they reimburse us. So, yes, the county is putting up the funds in there, saying that we have this, I, we spend this. I, I ask them for the money back, then we put it back into that account to make up.
Okay. So, you're right, so, okay, it's like, it's, what's the name of this grant, because I like to add it to the.
Right, it's gonna be just like the other ones, D P S P JAG, it's federal funds, and it's for drug courts.
Family drug court?
Yes, it does both, it actually, this, this money funds both programs in assistance with the A O C funds that we get.
So, Mr. President, okay, what I'll be doing is, let me ask one question, because, before we move on, it's, it's, what is this? What, what is this?
What she's saying, this is the funding that she's talking about that county, okay? And they're moving it in, this goes back, this is the receipt, this was first, so they were set up in last year's budget. This, I'm saying, and I can't actually that, that's last year's budget. Uh, you and I have to look at that when we get through here, I like to pull that.
Anything else for the county?
All right, now that I got any, any carry any motions? All right, any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "a". Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous. All right, thank you. Departmental report next.
Good morning, board. Brad, Adams County E M A Director. I just got a couple things this morning, uh, everybody know that the, the heat is rising, uh, there's no rain in the forecast, so probably nothing we can have, so. Even though we got a lot of things happening in the tropics, uh, there's no, nothing, no rain coming our way. Uh, with that being said, the state has put us on a continuous burn ban to further notice, so, uh, we'll be enforcing that, uh, throughout the county. With the fire coordinator with the sheriff office on that. So no burning of any sort outside, uh, you can go to our, the constituents can go to our website, uh, if they got any concerns on what they can burn and what they can't do. And hopefully, uh, we know that homecoming, coming up, people want to do these bonfires, things, but if we on the burn ban, uh, that would be a no go. So we going to putting that out now, so don't call the office, try to get, uh, their requests on it, because there's no burning in the county, we won't be able to do that. So we, we'll try to reach out to those schools that may be doing that for homecoming. Also, uh, just be aware, I want to know, uh, COVID, uh, picking back up, uh, so we need to be cognizant of that. We, I'm not gonna ask the board to put on a mask, foundation, nothing like that right now, uh, we just waiting to hear back from the state, but those are certain things that's coming up, we gonna try to reach out to the state. If we got any out there, any extra masks, enhance sometimes, go ahead and bring those forward, uh, sort of request those, just in case, uh, anybody need them, or if they feel safe for any county employees to have. So I'm gonna make the request this week, uh, we can get those on hand. One request travel, Officer Luxie, uh, I gotta speak at the Emergency Services Administratives, uh, Professional Association on E nine one and E M A updates, and that's gonna be on September the seventh. They came for everybody that need to drive down.
Uh, well, it's been properly moved, well, we need a request for travel, uh, it's, uh, expense paid trip, so it's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins. Do we have any discussion, anybody have any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "a". Any opposed, may they have the same right.
Uh, also, we updated our county emergency management plan, uh, we did that, so we just need the board to go and adopt that, uh, of the new plan, uh, from last year. We had done that document, we just finished county emergency management plan, and I can give you guys a copy of it.
Yeah, can you get a minute?
All right, so you ready to press that? E M A Director?
There's nothing in there we're not gonna be in trouble with, is it?
I've been here nine years, y'all know got it from me, I won't, I won't try to change that.
It's based, based on the FEMA BEMAs.
Right, yeah, what it is, y'all change supervisors every year, so I had to get the new supervisor to adopt it on that, so they gotta be correct with their, like Wes did, and now Kevin, I mean, I mean, uh, Warren.
All right, any more discussion?
That's it.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "a". Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous. All right, uh, Mr. Bradford, I have one question, I know, when Darren was here, we extended the burn ban, dude, I think he asked for the end of the month, do we need to extend it, though?
No, the governor, the governor went ahead, the governor's, yeah, the governor's signed missing before, so Darren's a tear for the notice, so. I was gonna go ahead and expire, and the governors will pick up.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we have what we need on record, all right, but we thank you for the job you do, excuse.
I just wanna ask a question, I know you can't answer, but I'm just going off what I'm hearing in the community, and like you say, uh, people are getting sick, and, uh, we do have employees around here with, uh, underlying health conditions, and, uh, I know we don't have nothing in place, and I know they gotta be doing, and out of these buildings, and they broke here, and they got underlying health conditions. So, yes, we gonna wait till we hear from whoever to react to whatever's going on. We in a react mood right now, right?
What we can do, what the board can do, I can get with Raven, uh, the county nurse, uh, and she can put some guidelines, if people in the county are sick, you know, we can put those, hey, stay at home, get checked. We can do those as preventative measure, if that's what the board wanna do.
Well, other thing I'm saying is this, uh, if we already know, I'm not saying we have COVID in none of these buildings, 'cause I don't know. Only thing I'm saying, I know we have employees that underlying health condition, and I just want them to be aware, I'm not trying to get nobody to go home and get a check or nothing like that, but I just want them to be aware and be safe, and, and keep they self safe, if they can, 'cause it, this stuff is real out here. And ain't nobody talking about it, but it's all over, 'cause I'm getting texts from California, I'm getting texts, I got friends all over giving, sending me these texts, and telling me how bad it is up there, and that stuff traveling all over, so I'm just wanting employees to be real careful, uh, if they have a underlying health condition, they need to protect their selves, thank you.
And what I can do, I can get with Raven, uh, come up with some, uh, policy, protocol, through Scott, if somebody been around, somebody that tested positive for COVID, we have a protocol in place for the department here to utilize, instead of just, you know, putting a, a big scare away everybody. But like I said, safety is the number one protocol, and if I can get her on that, and press something back to the board through you, Scott, if that's okay with the board.
It's okay with me, and what about the rest of the board, is that finally anybody else?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
All right, we thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
All reason I'm bringing this up, because, uh, the county insurance that we have for our employees, we need to be healthy, 'cause if we sick, you think the insurance, uh, it's really gonna be high then, that's certain.
That's not the only reason you're bringing up the bridge, you want to report.
I said, this is my story.
Mr. Bradford.
Just here to give a quick update on the Adams County Home Grant. Scott is currently working on all the title opinions on the five homes, and I think he has some.
Yeah, the title, yes, sir, the title opinions have been done, I emailed y'all, like little things that have popped up on the title, I'll, I'll re, resend to all of you. It might be stuff that we can get corrected, that we can go with a home grant, um, sometimes with the judgment or something like that on there, so I'll resend it, and y'all take a look at them.
And in the process of going through my paperwork, I realized I never got an administrative contract from you guys for this home project, so I looked my administrative contract, and I sent an email to Scott last week, for him to look at it. But anyway, Scott, Scott will have a professional contract too, for the legal services he's doing. Y'all did procure, it's been a month ago or so, for the asbestos inspector, uh, I'll bring her contract at the next board meeting. So we can, as soon as Scott finishes up the title, the official title opinions, I'll submit that to Mystic Home Corporation, we can proceed with the asbestos led inspections, and then get surveyed on also.
Scott, this was the home.
This is the home grant that M D A provides, and does.
Actually, it used to be M D A, now it's Mystic Home Corporation, but it is a hundred percent funded, there's no county matching this all, so. And that's all I have, and I'll, well, you may, I'll tell me the button on this there, let Scott review it, it's two executive contracts from my director, one for y'all.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bradford.
Lieutenant, you got me something, saying about the hundred thousand dollars and, uh, twenty thousand dollars for each supervisor district to, uh, help to, ten needed, five or more with the, uh, money that we put in place.
I had a call, works today, this morning, this weekend, I did the research that I needed to do to get the information over to him, show how legally that it can be done, I put a call on to him this morning, and I'm gonna hassle him and make me.
Nah, it shouldn't be a hassle.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna get, get, get with him and get that done.
Let me say this, it's not a house of nowhere else.
Yes, sir.
So, if we appropriate the money, they got guidelines in place already, they need to find a way to make it work, we, it's not a house, just don't try to be looking for ways not to make it work.
Exactly, I, I understand.
All right, departmental report next.
Good morning, board. First thing I have, uh, Mr. Gray, the three-way stops at the Old Country Club and South and North Country Club, I have this in place.
Appreciate it. Mr. President, uh, we had a, been a dinner out there, people was complaining, and you go down to the end, you got people coming this way, and you, they had a line, but wasn't nobody stopping. So I took a page out of Supervisor Milton's book and put some stop signs. Thank you.
All right, next thing I have, uh, you should have it up there, I think that's it, up there, President Gaines, right here on the front there, it's a request from the school to cut the ditch around behind the football field alongside the soccer fields, uh, we do it a couple times a year. Uh, but this year they requested a spraying to, us to spray it, to kill it, uh, says something we need to send a mobile for, Mr. Slower, to get reimbursed for the chemicals on the spray or what.
We can't tell and see.
Did that have a dollar amount on it?
No, I, I was just asking, now, we, we've cut it in the past, but for spraying, it's, they put a request in for that this year.
Right, let me ask you a question. Uh, I've been back there and seen when it rained real hard, it's a lot of water coming through there, so if we sprayed it and killed the grass, uh, we gonna have erosion back there? Because they really need to think about that, if you kill that grass with the amount of water coming out through the back of their school, just put that on their mind before we talk about killing, I think cutting will be fine.
First request of army for a spray, I didn't know about, but I can't, you know what I'm saying, that's what I'm asking, but I will talk to someone or send an email back to them about that.
Well, I, I'll get, uh, well, this is what I do, I, I'll ask for a motion to, to, uh, to allow the road department to continue to cut it, but also, um, have them question the spraying on it. Is that clear, man?
We need a motion, Scott.
You don't need a motion to cut it? You got it?
They, they, we cut it, but I, I make a motion, but they use cut.
I mean, since they sent a request, and we do it for dirt, and they already been cutting it, I'd just like it clarified in a minute. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, will there be any discussion, discussion?
Robbie, if you cut it a week from now, it shouldn't be an issue with that grass going back for the winter anyway.
And like I said, you know, far as the way as you did with study when they do, but now, y'all getting the question.
They've been cutting it all the time, I'm just making it legal, put it far out there, we speak to it out there.
All right, next thing I have.
Oh, we, 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 we ain't quite got it, sir.
Mr. President. See, I'm not, I'm not, we, I've never seen this before, so I, you know.
We got requests on course, nobody trying to harass us, where we trim limbs and things like that, and that's what we went before, that we would get them all to send requests, that was, and I got some out of our meetings, they do send requests for us to do work on school properties, and that's.
It definitely not granted, because our, our turnaround list, uh, the dirt list, everything came before the board, that's all I'm saying.
I know, I know we've done turnarounds, and we've done parking lot stuff, and whatever, I don't know.
Yeah, asphalt, they buy the asphalt.
Let me, let me help you out.
You didn't get that, go, go ahead.
You got a big old drain coming off the road, and the drains in the back, or where the foot, they not cutting the football field, they cutting the ditch where the water off the street drain all the way behind.
Okay, just to help the drainage with the caress.
Yeah.
Bro, all that drainage stuff, sorry about that.
It's cut all in front of wall.
There's a lot of water coming out through there.
They cutting the drain, the lawn on school got their own, they cutting their own grass, anyway, they just, we just cutting the, uh, lawn off that we doing. So, if we, if our hearts and mind clear, Charlie, you clear?
I'm clear now, sorry.
Rest of the board clear? Uh, all in favor vote by using the sign of "a". Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous. All right, now, Mr. Dolly, you can move forward.
Next thing I have, uh, I had a phone call last week from Marion Wesley, Steam Plant Road, uh, said they had a high-speed chase out M O K, turn on them, turn on, uh, Steam Plant. He was requesting speed humps, that's a state aid route, we do not do speed humps, I tried to explain that to him, but.
I take care.
He wouldn't take my answer, so I talked to the engineer this morning, just, you know, make sure I was a hundred percent, and I was, but, uh, yes, if you would please, 'cause he wanted to come to the board, and I told him that I would bring it up today.
I take care.
Okay, thank you. Request travel for, uh, Meg and myself to go to Jackson. We have a road manager board meeting on September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three. With the board members of the Road Manager Association.
Do we have any paperwork?
No, I'll get it, but I just brought it up today, I, I wrote it down, but I get the paperwork too. It's just one day, we just going back for the day, but I get it.
All right, so what we gonna do is make a motion pending, uh, paperwork.
Aight.
All right, is it clear? So is that properly moved by Supervisor Gray? And properly settled by Supervisor Hutchison? Uh, that be in discussions, there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, you say aye. In a poll, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney. Since they just going in the county vehicle, do you need paperwork on it? Or you, are we giving them permission to drive the county vehicle in case of something happen, they had permission from the board? But do they need paperwork on that?
Not necessarily paperwork, there's no reimbursement. We do have it approved on the minutes though, like you said, that way. You're leaving town without our permission, you're not acting.
So one more question, y'all gonna have lunch or something that y'all need the county to pay for a meal?
It's just a.
What, what, what date you said?
It's, uh, September the twenty-fifth.
You just want, get it right for the minute. All right. Yep, and, uh. All right, hearts and minds clear? All right, Mr. Dolly, you can move forward.
Uh, next thing I have, last meeting, we discussed made that repeat, issues that we were having. Uh, met with Camo, um, this past Monday. Uh, they are making some repairs on the cemetery roads and Highway eighty-four number three sites. Uh, they are making their repairs as we speak. Once they get through, they will move to the next group to make their repairs on the edge. Uh, just give an update on that. Um, the last email we sent to JKS and to Hope, which is the other contractor, was August the seventh. We sent it back in July, I sent it again August the seventh, they got a response on the repairs that need to be done on those EWP's. So I guess I'll give you, Slower, to see which direction we need to go with some repairs that need to be done on that group. And I can't get a response to August the seventh.
Yeah, I still need a response too, on how much we have to be reimbursed back, so.
Okay.
Six hundred and seven thousand five hundred forty, sixty-four dollars, that's about enough.
A lot of money.
Six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars?
Six hundred and seven thousand five hundred forty, I'm five hundred and sixty-four with eighty-eight cents, that's what, that's what I saw. But I was gonna ask about the county fund loan, I guess that we did to pay this, or whatever the case may be, whether it was gonna be reimbursed. Cause you, you, you know about that, right? That's why I get the figures from him.
But I, I need the figures from Slower, like I said, I did, we do need to get these repairs done, we, we get the money back. So, it's ready, I keep bringing, you know, to the board, but I'm just giving y'all an update, the last email we sent.
All right, one second, uh, Mr. Mills, you have a.
Mr. Donald, what are those sites?
Hope, uh, one repair, and I'll have them in front of me, is that, uh, Providence Road, Project, um, Providence and, uh, River Terminal on the corner there. That needs some repairs on the edge, and I'll have to go back and pull my list, it was, you know, not a bunch of them there, I think it was three or four, but that, that's one of them that does need some repairs.
Was it Andrew Hall too?
Uh, no, they made roadblocks to, uh, Camo, they're moving their next. Once Camo gets through the repairs there on now, they're going to that group there. Uh, and Hope, that should be this week, that they're moving to there, they want to tear it once, and that's when I have to.
I know Mel Row was one of them, but he's fine?
Yeah.
Is he fine?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, well, you can proceed.
That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Department of Commerce next. Good morning, boys, just only update.
Uh, pre-award for, uh, EWP number fifty-three eighteen, that's Churchill Road, Brooklyn Drive, and Lofton Lane. Submitted and start NRCS, they emailed back saying they received it, so now we're just waiting on the executive documents back from them. And the DSR, so that we can begin our design for those three sites. The EWP, uh, fifty-three oh six, which included Magnolia Bluff, Site Two, and Number Three, as well as Lincoln Heights. Um, got the, had a conversation with NRCS last week, except the additional funding was approved, so that we can go ahead and move forward. Skipping pre-construction meeting for those sites, so we'll be having a pre-con this Wednesday at eight o'clock. Um, the Striking Only Project for Liberty Road, Cranfield and North Palestine Road, uh, had a final inspection on Thursday. There were no issues found, therefore we began to close our process for that project. The new, uh, Striking Only Project that includes Kingston Road, or will be a road on Alton Road, uh, we will begin the road surveying on next week. We haven't got the official documents back, but since it was, so they said we're gonna approve it, we're gonna go ahead and start that work. And the paperwork should come from state aid at some point in time. That's really all I have. I, Deerfield Road, I've reached out to Mr. Harron, he gonna send me an email about his findings, there will need to be a discussion. So we'll have a discussion whenever he get that information to me.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to ask a question, and maybe Rob can answer this to everyone. But, uh, Cotton Drive, that's one that we, although we asked about.
Yes, ma'am.
I had got a call in regards to it, because it's so dark on that road, it has no striping.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, it was always an accident on it because of that, they can't see on it without the striping and anything. Is that a state aid road or anything, do you know? That is not.
We do have some funds left in that.
Right.
That's our project. I will get with the board, send the email out to the board member of what was left, and what we want to do, we probably could add that on there for that striping, you know, out of that.
Yeah, I think it's got a call about it's an accident, because they couldn't see on it.
Listen, I sent out this mail this afternoon on what's left, and discuss to the way we're gonna go this, and what we're going to do.
Sounds great. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions for the, uh, engineer? Thank you, uh, for your job you do, Department of Commerce next.
I really appreciate you all, sir.
Thank you. Sheriff, I guess you need you. Got you. Chief don't start it.
The only thing that we have is the renewal of the school resource officer contract. Uh, we have one deputy assigned over there, which is Jordan Wells, and we just need to re-sign the contract.
So we need a motion to re-sign the contract now? I need a motion to re-sign the contract for the school resource officer, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchison, and it's been properly settled by Supervisor Gray, but that be in discussion.
Uh, Mr. Attorney.
Sir.
Uh, is it nine months, twelve months, or what? No, last time somebody, we had that debate, they saying that school's paying twelve months, and I don't think they're gonna pay twelve months.
They didn't pay twelve.
They paid nine, they paid nine, and we paid, we paid the other.
And, and there is no five thousand dollar incentive like there was last time, they did not get that grant. So it was just a base rate, base rate home.
All right, so if there be any more discussion, if there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you, you say aye. In a poll, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
That's all, all we have, unless you have any questions or.
I just want to take a minute, cause I know you all, how y'all doing this morning? I just want to take a minute and publicly, uh, thank the sheriff's office and the police department for that pretty serious incident that happened out there on Murder Drive. That day, uh, when all that, when that double murder happened out there, uh, we needed some help. And so I personally called for the police department to come out there on the scene to help us, because there was hundreds of people out there, streets blocked. I mean, and we were trying to preserve the scene, deal with the family, make sure evidence was collected, and we needed some help, and they responded. So I do want to publicly thank them, but I also want to thank the guys and the ladies and the men and the women of the Sheriff's Office as well. Since that incident happened, they have worked around the clock to identify people, gather evidence, gather all kinds of, uh, video surveillance, and, and a lot of technical stuff that's went on. And as you can see by reading the papers this weekend, we're ready to get who we believe are the shooters in custody. And, you know, that, that says a lot about the people that work at the sheriff's office, but it also says a lot about the community. So I want to thank the community as well, because even though we, we, we offered a crime stopper, let me not say we, let me say Southwest Crime Stoppers offered up to a ten thousand dollar reward, uh, for evidence leading to conviction and prosecution of this case. The citizens who reached out to us did it just because, they did it because they had had enough. They don't want this kind of incident happening in their community, and, and they pushed us in the direction we needed to go. And so I, I want to say thank you to the community for doing that, and, uh, and Supervisor, I want to thank you all too though. Because those cameras you put up have been extremely helpful in IDing vehicles and times and slots and things of that nature. So, you know, what I'm getting at is it's not a, a one-person show. It took the entire community to get involved for us to be able to handle that thing within a week of it happening, and it's not over. You know, these, you know, now we're on the backside of it, and you still got a lot more left to do going through the judicial system. But I, I think the public need to know that it wasn't about the money, the people just cared about their, the neighborhood and what was happening. And they, and they stepped up in their own ways and sent us the information we need to get them. So that's all I have, just want to say I appreciate everybody. Sheriff, well, that's exactly what it's gonna take for citizens to get involved like that. Uh, last week when, um, James Lee Hayden sat right there in a budget meeting, and is, is talking about retiring, he seen too much. I think that might have been the tip, tip of the iceberg for him, it just, he said, you know, maybe time to do something else. And that, so that must have been a bad scene out there, I hate that anybody has to walk up on that. I'm gonna tell you, it was, it was probably one of the most chaotic scenes I had, you know. And I've been doing this twenty-three years, and I've seen all kinds of murders, I've seen kids get killed, raped, all kinds of stuff. But I, the crowd that gathered on us so quickly, I, I had to call everybody out. And when I say everybody, we had to get people, we had to get everybody we had out of the sheriff's office. And I called on air and asked for Chief Green to send me everybody the police had available and being some of them. And even with that many law enforcement on the scene, it was rough to keep, you know, to keep people at bay, cause, you know, the emotions running wild. You got the little ones over here, you know, that were trying to preserve evidence and collect. You got the family inside the house that just ripped to shreds, cause this just happened in broad open daylight. While people were home, and you just had the word getting out, and people just flooding, flooding that air to the point to where first responders couldn't even get down there to us. They had to top it, they had to park at the top of the hill and run down the street to help us out. And you had just our poor group down there trying to hold it down, preserve evidence, trying to keep people out of scenes, open it off. And let me tell you, when people see caution tape, you would, you would think that they would stay behind it, that's not the case though. You know, when the emotion's running wild, you not thinking about that, you thinking about what can you do to get over there and help. You not thinking about what we're gonna need to solve that case at the time. And, and for a minute, all we could do was preserve and try to hold the scene. I mean, you seen deputies out there wrestling people left and right, and we were outmating out there. And it was, it's not that they were trying to harm us, they thinking they would help them, but they, you know, that's, that's not what it, that's not what you do when you come into a crime scene. You know, we trying, we gonna try to get DNA and everything off this stuff, so. I, I, that's why I think the police department and our guys, because even in the midst of all that that went on out there, they still were able to, to do the jobs. And they showed up and ran every day since. What you just said with the corner, he seen enough. This is what we do every day, and that's why the wellness programs and things that we put in place, that's why we push them so hard. Because I could say, twenty-three years, I've been able to sleep good at night. I think that was the first time in a while that I wasn't able to rest easy, until we had at least got these guys in custody. Last night was the first night since this happened that I was able to rest easy. Not easy, but just get some rest period, because my mind was on whoever committed this, hang this crime, we not gonna stop until we get here, you know. And so now we got them in custody, now the rest of the staff, but it just took, I just want to say, it just takes a collective effort to do that. The training, if, if those, if those deputies didn't have the training that they had, they wouldn't have been able to maintain, maintain their composure under what we were, we were built out there. You know, we have to stay cool and calm while everybody else is chaotic. And the names that they were being called and the things, how they were being belittled, I told them, remember, we built for this. This is what we do, we face adversity and we train in conflict resolution. Remember your training, stay calm. Let this happen all day, that's not gonna hurt you. We worrying about this, preserving and doing it, and, and eventually the family did come down, we were able to. And when I say the family, I don't mean the immediate family, let me be clear on that. I'm not saying anything negative about the immediate family. When I say family, I'm talking about all these own lookers that came from all over the place, and I don't, and I say family, I can say family, friends, or just own lookers. That's where a lot, a lot was coming from, and it was overwhelming, even when the police department brought their whole group out there. It was a lot for them, but they held down with us too, and so, like I said, it took the community, it took the board, took sheriff, took the police officers, it took everybody involved to get us to where we are now, and, and as tragic of a situation as it was, it was still good to see that we had the support we needed to, to get what we get done up to this point. Now we gotta get through the rest of it, and, and that's gonna be on us if whoever else wants to continue to share evidence, which we're still pushing for. But, but don't think that what y'all do isn't important to what we do. If y'all don't provide what we need to be successful on one side, we gonna be successful on the other side. So just wanted to say I appreciate y'all, that's all.
Thank you, yes.
Let me say this, uh, Sheriff, I'd like to commend you, your deputies, uh, Chief, Chief, uh, Caverin, and the, uh, police department for what you all did. You all did a great job, and, you know, even start getting to solving this case. You know, when you see people coming masked, covered up and everything, that's hard to solve. And as fast as you all solved that case, you know, that was a really good job that you all did. And then, like I say, it took the community too, so, uh, and that's what it's gonna take to stop all this crime from happening, you know. We just have to continue to work together and pray together, and, uh, hope all this come to an end. Thank you.
And that was, that's what was so impressive, is that, you know, you've seen cases where nobody said anything. That wasn't case this time. We put those pictures up online, we had tips come from, we have people. You know.
Men just saying, it's enough, it's enough.
Yep. You know, you can't always prevent things from happening, but you can control how you respond, and so.
We appreciate the job that y'all do.
Mr. President, I, 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 I'm, 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 uh, Supervisor Hutchison said it all, but I always say, uh, when the community get fed up, then you gonna see a difference in your community. Law enforcement can't do it all by itself, I don't care how many cameras we put up, the cameras is helpful, but the community is the key. When they get tired, then you gonna see a difference in the community. And, uh, it, it, it's all about building relationship. And, and I'm glad the police department and the sheriff department have built a relationship where when one needs the other, and vice versa, they right there to support them and help them, so that's a blessing, thank you.
All right.
It really was, and, and like you, you get it on the head, and you can't say it enough, how important it is to have a relationship between you.
All right, thank you.
I only let Sheriff trust.
Trust.
They trust you.
You just said something that's very key there.
I know.
In twenty-three years, I've never given up a source, and so when those folks sent that information. And so when those folks sent that information, they know that their names won't come up. But they put us in the right direction where we can do our part as law enforcement to get it done. So you're right, trust does matter. All right. That's all I have, y'all. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna I'm gonna bring it back around. There was a public uh public comment, any public comment?
Good morning, Board.
One.
I'm just here uh to ask, I'm concerned about the county's budget. And I wanted to know if there's anyone who could expound on the budget and and deficit that the budget currently is under and what are we planning to do to balance it?
Well, I think if you just take your seat and we're gonna go through the rest of some budgets in a little while, you um probably could come up with some good answers. We working on, coming up with some answers right now. Uh, we putting things together. We uh had a budget meeting on last week, a couple of days. We're getting facts together, so we we have to come up with some uh factual evidence for what we gonna do for the budget. And that's gonna be part of our meeting uh meeting today.
Yeah, I would really uh hope that you would explore some options. And your first option would not be to raise property taxes. I know everything is going up, but um to find out some other ways to generate revenue rather than to to campaign to the homeowners' property taxes.
All right. Thank you. Come on in, Brian.
My question here is relating to the budget too.
Okay.
I mean, to tell me y'all only got one person in control with no backup, if that person makes a mistake, which is what happened. If that person makes a mistake, which is what happened, you gotta suffer the consequences until you know it's there?
But this is Mr., he wanted to just state your name, so I know it's Mr. Francis Ranson. For thirty minutes. She need forty minutes.
Francis Ranson Jr.
Yeah.
My thing is, like I said uh in the beginning, y'all don't have a backup. If somebody makes a mistake, you won't realize it until it's too late? That's my question.
All right.
Oh, for for the record, I did give you my name, Cherry Brown.
We we've seen you a lot, so we found, do you work?
Yeah, I'll make sure. I'll come to the table for a minute. Where Sheriff?
I just have one thing I forgot to tell y'all. I just wanted to remind Scott about one thing that he has still opened to the board. I know I brought you, me and Supervisor Hudson brought you here a while back to talk, but Sustainable Partners LLC, that group, remember they said at this very meeting, that they'll fund your whole thing and let you set the terms of your payment back and how long you wanted to extend it out. So I just wanted you guys to keep that in mind as you think about solutions for the county.
Right. Scott just wouldn't charge interest. I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Well, I mean, but that's for y'all to discuss. I just wanted you to know that that's that's still there.
Yeah, I mean, I I talked to him.
Right.
I didn't ask for any information. I can circle back if anything.
All right.
You see, it's under way.
I'm gonna come to the table for a minute. With Mr. Gray, y'all, Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, I ain't really got that much today, but I I I just wanna make a statement. And it that that ain't, it's not only dealing with the budget, but it's dealing with uh anything that happened in our community. Uh, we have to stop leaning to our own understanding and put the right information out there. And once you put the right information out there, we don't, we we won't have to go back and correct the wrong information that's been put out there by people that really don't know and understand what's going on. Private verse four and seven say wisdom is the principle. Can't get wisdom with all that getting, get a understanding. So that's the main thing we need to get when it comes to information. My sympathy goes out to the Hunt family, the Milton family, the Johnson family, the Harris family, the Reed family, the Brooks family, the Woods family, the Earl, the Carmen and the Ford family. And uh I know he's not, he's just a contractor and uh I still have some things that I see in ways I talked to Supervisor Milton this morning. We got uh four things dealing with this budget, with the garbage and purges and insurance. And the raises that we continue to give once we adopt our budget helped put us in a situation where we are today because I was always taught, once you adopt a budget, you got to live within the means of the budget that you adopt. You can't continue to put people in place to bring raises to the commu- to the to the board, knowing that you don't have the money to pay for the raises. Uh, in in closing, this is one of the most challenging budgets since I've been here. But at the end of the day, if we put all our minds together and focus on uh solutions and 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 not what the problem is, we gonna focus on ways to find solutions to these problems. I don't know what the end outcome gonna be, but I don't think it's gonna be as bad as people think that conclusion I was for.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, the only thing I have is uh, I I talked about partner drive, but I need to get approval for the MAS board of directors um the September seventh through tenth and plus a couple. Uh, I'm giving uh proof for travel, but it'll be reimbursed. It'll be reimbursed.
All right.
September seventh through tenth.
Motion by Wes. Second by Supervisor Gray. All right, uh, any discussion? On both? All in favor? Nails? Mr. Gang stepped out of the room. Is that all you have?
He's a he's a bill by phone.
Okay, okay.
A budget.
A budget.
Yes.
Mr. Middleton.
Uh, I think I will save all of mine for later when we get into budget discussion.
Okay, uh, Robbie, I think you uh said you were addressing the Kingston Road, Creek Road, Raines Pike situation where there might be a dead animal called Bala Odom.
Correct. I took out quite last night. We are taking care of it.
Okay, I got about nine texts about that, but I I understand where it's coming from now. So we will, we will take care of that. Um, trying to figure everything else. I gotta figure the big executive session or or has to do with the budget. We'll ask Scott one thing. Do we have any money left in the care of that?
Sure.
Um, the reason I'm asking is that, um, District Two has never done anything with care of that money, to my knowledge. What little there is, I mean, everybody else has been about four hundred eighty to five hundred thousand dollars a piece, I think, on different projects. I still wanna put mine towards uh paying down debt somewhat. But uh, we'll we'll talk about all the things that the budget thing. That that's all I got, uh. Mr. Gang.
All right, Deputy First Page B. You have a thing? Chancellor Clark, Brandon Lewis?
Yes, sir. I just have a couple of questions to take on me. Need to have the September bonds for across the minutes. You have Derek Freeman, Jessica Davis, Keisha Green, with Shane Riley, Tracy Davis and Wanda.
You heard the request of Chancellor Clark. Can I get a motion? It's been promptly moved by Supervisor Hudson and promptly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Um, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "a". In a poll, Nate had the same right, motion carried in that. All right.
I have a budget limit just shifting money in a fund for Coalition for Children and Youth Corps. You're moving four hundred dollars from one nineteen to twenty-three, five oh one to one nineteen to twenty-three, five eighty-one. Need to have that. Bring it across the minutes, please.
You heard the request of the Chancellor Clark. Can I get a motion? It's been promptly moved by Supervisor Hudson, promptly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "a". In a poll, Nate had the same right, motion carried in that.
Uh, I have one more request from the County Department Controller. It is to move eight hundred and forty dollars from oh oh one, one twenty-five, four seventy-five to oh oh one, one twenty-five, six hundred. We have it. Bring it across the minutes, please.
You heard the request of the Chancellor Clark. Can I get a motion? It's been promptly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Promptly seconded by Supervisor Milton. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "a". In a poll, Nate had the same right, motion carried in that.
I still have, thank you. Oh, and I'm I'm to be determined.
I'm to be determined. All right, Attorney.
I'm gonna get a one thing when we get back out. I've got, I know you've sent over the handbook. Every so often, we'll reapprove the handbook and spread it across the minutes so that it's not piecemeal, all in one location. Um, sent it to y'all, been probably about a month now. Shouldn't be anything new other than maybe a correction of a typo or something like that. Um, but I'd ask that we get the handbook approved instead of this date on the on the cover.
Good. The due date?
For August twenty-first. That, we have it on the front cover. That way we can go back and pull the minutes.
The move.
All right, you heard the request of Attorney. It's been promptly moved by Supervisor Wilson and we're approving the handbook, a newly revised handbook today. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been promptly seconded by Supervisor Milton. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "a". In a poll, Nate had the same right, motion carried in that. All right.
And then I also have an "a" and you be determined.
And I'm to be determined. All right, uh, well, come to me. I have uh a request of a new hire for uh, this is Zachary Washington for the Maintenance Department. Thirteen dollars a hour. The paperwork has been signed. It is a rehire. I do, it is shit rehire. Maintenance.
Yeah.
So can I get a motion?
They short?
Yeah, it's in the mail, Clark.
It's a position offer?
Yeah, they, they were supposed to have two part-time ones come in and they did not, and they show up right.
So that's part-time, full-time?
It's full-time.
They short?
Yeah, they definitely short. So it's been promptly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Can I get a second? It's seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "a". In a poll, Nate had the same right, motion carried in that. All right, I have another from uh AGFC. Um, it's addressed to the President. They are doing, President of the Board Supervisor, they are doing training, uh, helping people change their and what we do at AGFC. This year, we are providing clients with free life skill training. Uh, the topics will consist of money management, soft skills, employment skills plus more. So basically, they are asking us a six-month recommendation. Would we be uh willing to allow them to use the safe room on these dates? It's November sixteen of twenty twenty-three, December twenty-first, January twenty-fifth of the following year, February twenty-second of the following year, March eighteenth and April eighteenth. So that's is the question, will we allow them to use for the free uh skill?
You can get it checked with Quebec. I don't mind, as long as it's not belted those things.
Over these dates?
Or that man right there hadn't tied it up?
Yeah, yeah.
See, I I told them before they had come to me, but I guess they 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 don't lie to them. Cause people would predict that. They are, I told them it's already set. So I, yeah, they they just come to me. I can go and give them. They flood them and give Quebec.
So.
And and hope there's no natural disaster in the area.
If it is, then they got to move.
Always how it is for that facility.
Yes, for that facility, because it's actually a emergency man, but it's a shelter. So they definitely do it then. So I'm asking, I'm asking the question, do we need to spread across our men, uh, pending approval, the emergency management and our secretary for uh just in case it's not previously booked?
When's the next, when's that date that they want to book it?
Uh, November seventh, sixteen.
It's passed to the next time?
Yeah.
It's not urgent, so we pass it to the next time.
I just wanna make sure though, if you have a So I have, we don't have case management, basically. No, 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 sixteen. I'm I'm thinking about it.
Does it get a lot better there?
Okay, well, well, um, I'll just take it. It's not in our phone from Deputy Clark and the Chancellor Clark. You know, we've been fighting with somebody from St. Catherine Creek. We definitely need somebody by September. September what?
The thirtieth is when the reports do.
September thirtieth is when the report do. So I don't know where we at. I think we have been on bunch of avenues. So we definitely need to find, uh, figure out what we gonna do about the uh St. Ca- St. Catherine Creek utility.
I I asked for a description of what you want the individual to do. And I got somebody in mind. I don't know if he's doing it because he check everything for the county and for the water work anyway. So if if it's something that he can do, but I don't know what to tell him because I don't know what they do. Besides check the
Where where do we get the qualification from? Robbie can get them. He, cause Robbie used to do it. So kid, Mr. Robert, can you get that? All right, Mr. Gray, here, give us two. We need to get that. I do have a uh I, from the IT Director, the two known employees for Drug Court, Rick uh Varno and Frank Gies have uh uh cell phone request from Judge Deborah Blackwell and the Department of Milhale.
That does not need to be approved. I know they've been doing it, but the handbook provides IT and it can administer, make sure it's within budget. This is reimbursable, so you don't have to use through my board.
Okay. But thank you. We don't have to do this one either, but I'll do it anyway. We gonna ask for approval for uh, this is our tire grant. I mean, for Meg Freeman, uh, it's uh reimbursement of three hundred and sixteen dollars. Can I get a motion? It's been promptly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "a". In a poll, Nate had the same right, motion carried in that. All right, uh, I'd like to say just pretty much basically, you know, our community, we talk about our community all the time and uh, you know, it's it's a lot going on in our community. And coming together with community have um, that we will always say divided, we fall together, we stand. And that just don't mean when we come to tragic times. Um, we had that to start uh another term, but most of us has been elected. And I will still say this, starting off on this meeting, we still need to have communication. We have a lot of communication breaches and we have a And we have a lot of communication breaches, I would say, for the wrong reason. I, 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 I would, I would right see it on camera. We definitely need to take sales out of the way. And that's true, me and myself, I know this thing get, uh, can get personal to or something, get emotional to. But for to do the best thing for the community, we gonna look at it. And we're never gonna make the same decision, uh, all the time. And I think that's what, how this board has been accomplished so much with different minds, being able to speak their mindset, but being able to come back together and make good decisions for the county. And that's just not here, that's all departments, uh, not just at the board, but I mean, all departments. As we can work together from the leaders down to the policemen, to the AMR. It's gonna take everybody in our community to make our community better. So, you know, that's what I have to say. And you know, of, of course, all the time I think about the, the deaths and shootings, uh, that's been in our community, that's plaguing our community. And you know, I've been a victim of it my own self. So, you know, it's personal. I hate to see folks killing up everybody, but that is definitely not the answer. You know, one of the guys that, um, was killed in the incident was one of my students. A lot of y'all heard me say I'm a proud educator. Well, I started a decent program at Colleen and that was one of my proud students. And I can honestly say that that was one of the most manable students that I had. I remember him from being so manable, so humble when you're asking things that he was, always had a good answer. And if, if he was mad, you never didn't know it because he, he, he never disrespected it. So, it hurt and my heart goes out to his family and all other families that's going through a death that, um, the Harris family I know, Miss Sue Harris used to work for the county for a long while. She lost her son a few months ago tragically and she just buried another one, uh, that tragically died. So, death is on the rampage and I'll for condolences to all of them. And, uh, you know, I can say, um, let's do the best we can to work, uh, move out of the county forward and then, uh, yield my, uh, report and can I get a motion for closed termination? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and it's properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried now.